Good afternoon. I'm Jessica Robinson. I hereby call the April 17, 2025 meeting of the Stanton Planning Commission to order. The first item on our agenda is approval of the March 20, 2025 meeting minutes.
Madam Chair, I move that we approve the minutes of the March 20th Planning Commission meeting as presented.
I'll second.
It has been moved and seconded that we approve the March 20, 2025 meeting minutes as presented. Would the clerk please call the roll?
Ms. Wiegand.
Aye.
Mr. Hanson.
Aye.
Ms. Robinson.
Aye.
Motion carries.
All right. We now turn to new business on our agenda. Several of the items on the agenda tonight are public hearings. After the staff report is given on each item and the commission has an opportunity to ask questions of staff, I will open the public hearing. We will first give the applicant the opportunity to make comments about the request and then we will open up the floor to comments from the public and from Zoom. All speakers should come to the podium at the front and first provide us with their name and address. We ask that the applicant limit comments to 10 minutes and that all of their speakers limit their comments to three minutes. The first item of new business is item 3A, a public hearing in consideration of a request by Jones Garden to vacate, discontinue and abandon that portion of undeveloped Peck Street Public Right-of-Way identified as 0.173 acre of land lying between 434 Montgomery Avenue, parcel identification number 3544 and 500 Montgomery Avenue, parcel identification number 101888 and running between undeveloped Hammerk Street and Montgomery Avenue. Mr. Hartless, Planning Manager for the city will present the staff report.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Unfortunately, this item is not ready for tonight's public hearing. We advertised it anticipating that it would be ready for tonight, but it's not. So we're going to ask you all to adopt a motion that delays action on this item to a future meeting.
Um, I do have a question. Does that mean that we'll have to re- whatever the re-advertise the public hearing?
Yes, we will re-advertise the public hearing and we'll send out new adjacent property notices.
Thank you. Madam Chair, I move that planning commission delay consideration and action on this matter until a future meeting.
I reluctantly second. My only question is, is there anybody here that was actually prepared to talk about it? Because if we were advertised a public hearing, should we at least inquire about that?
I think that's up to you all. If you wanted to give them an opportunity to speak. If you, my only reservation is that the staff briefing says that we were going to move to table this. So if you do conduct the public hearing, I think we should probably conduct another public hearing in the future.
Is anyone here to speak to that particular item? Is there anyone on Zoom?
No, ma'am.
Then I happily second.
It has been moved and seconded that planning commission recommending tabling this item until a future meeting. Would the clerk please call the roll?
Mr. Hanson.
Aye.
Ms. Wiegand.
Aye.
Ms. Robinson.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Turning to item 3B, a public hearing in consideration of a request by Sarah Geary for a special use permit at 224 Taylor Street under the provisions of Stanton City Code 18.2.030 parenthetical 2. Mr. Hartless?
Thank you, Madam Chair. As you said, this is a special use permit request by Sarah Geary for a special use permit at 224 Taylor Street to operate a school in a portion of the building owned by Memorial Baptist Church. The property is located on Taylor Street and directly across from Stanton High School and behind McSwain Elementary School. The property is owned R1 low-density residential and in the immediate area, there are two public schools and a number of single-family uses. The current use of the property as Memorial Baptist Church will not change. The applicant has obtained permission from the church to use approximately 3,250 square feet of space within the existing building. This portion of the building will continue to also be used by the church as Sunday school space. Churches are permitted in the R1 districts through a special use permit and Memorial Baptist does have a current valid special use permit to operate at this location. The proposed school is not part of the church's ministry, so a separate special use permit is required in order to have a school on the property. The applicant proposes this school to operate as a single-room schoolhouse model. There will not, sorry, there will be two staff members and they indicated up to 12 students initially. The school will operate Monday through Friday from 8:00 AM to 3:15 PM. Staff has conducted a parking analysis. We determined that the most accurate parking calculation to use is the one for kindergarten, state schools and the equivalent private and parochial schools. As that calculation has provisions for student drop-off and pickup. When we use that calculation based on the number of staff and students, we determine that four parking spaces are required. In our parking analysis, we counted approximately 198 parking spaces on the church property. So parking is definitely not a problem for this proposed use. Surrounding zoning is R1 low-density residential. Surrounding uses, as I said before, include single-family homes and two schools as well as the existing church, which is located on the same property. Generally, staff is supportive of the request. There is one area of concern that staff believes there should be addressed during this, for the special use condition. Staff believes there should be a cap on the number of students and if that number is exceeded, then it would trigger a new special use permit review. Initially, we were going to propose 20, but the applicant asked us to reconsider. They proposed 100 and we settled on 50. And the reason, one of the reasons that we settled on 50 is that the building code provisions generally, when you exceed 50 people, those requirements increase. So it seemed like a logical number to choose. The city's comprehensive plan, future land use map, designates this area as low-density residential. The designation is characterized as single-family residences with a suggested density of one to five units per acre. Although not necessarily supported by the comprehensive plan, the property is currently used as a church, which is consistent with the provisions for uses permitted on review in the R1 district. It's also adjacent to two existing schools and the use of this property as a school seems to be consistent with those established uses. Staff is recommending that planning commission recommend approval of the special use permit with the provision that if the school use expands to exceed 50 students and staff, a new special use permit will be required.
All right. Are there any questions for staff before we open the public hearing?
Just curious if staff consider and discuss with the applicant the fact that McSwain uses part, the front part of that lot for their school hut drop-off.
Staff did consider that. I can't recall if we discussed that with the applicant.
But there's more than enough parking. I'm just, and it looks like the hours should be just avoiding school drop-off pickup time, but just make sure there's no conflict there.
I know that McSwain parents generally use the front or the west side of the church parking lot and that this would be a drop-off should be on the east side. That seems to be the door that they intend to use.
Okay.
But it, that could be a potential condition of approval if you all choose to do that.
That was one of the items we discussed on the. Any other questions of staff? Being none, then I'll go ahead and open the public hearing and ask the applicant to come to the podium.
Hello. Thank you for, for hearing comments here. My name's Sarah Geary and I'm one of the, my husband and I are founding the Action Academy Blue Ridge. We plan to, to launch the school in the fall. It's a very small, non-traditional school. And one of the reasons that we are considering Memorial Baptist, they have been very generous when it comes to, to rent requirements as well. Starting small is really my husband and I paying for this school and volunteering our time. Because we really believe in the, the educational model that's, that's a student-driven and is tailored to the individual interests and gifts of each student. So with, with their help when it comes to, on the rent front, especially starting out, they're, they're what makes the school like this possible. So very, very much appreciate their generosity if this location is approved. Thank you, Mr. Hartless and Ms. Nesselrod for your, your help as this is the first time we've been through this special use process. It's been a pleasure working with you and appreciate their approval for the recommendation or recommendation for the approval too. One thing that I do ask that the planning commission consider is raising the cap. I understand the, the need for a cap for sure, but raising that cap up to 100. And I've got four, four reasons that I'm asking that that would be consideration. The first is financial viability for our school. Once we have close to 100 students, we would have the, the financial wherewithal to be able to move out of Memorial Baptist space and to a, a building of our own that'll be dedicated to the school itself or to afford rent somewhere else. Now unfortunately, that would not be the case with tuition coming from just 50 students. Because at that point, we would just barely be able to cover the few staff salaries and school overhead. So what I would hope to avoid is proceeding at Memorial Baptist with the cap of only 50. And then over a few years, if we grow to, to 50 students, having to turn away new students with no possibility of getting more tuition that we can actually save up and afford to move to another location. By increasing the cap to 100, it would give us a runway to be able to do that. The second reason that I ask for that consideration is when it comes to the, from purely a, a building inspection perspective, the church is currently approved from a building inspection perspective to operate a, a school as a ministry of the church up to 100 students. After 100, the occupancy, it would change to, I believe, an educational occupancy versus an assembly occupancy. So we were initially talking before this process, talking with the pastors of that church about whether this school would run as a ministry or not. If it would have run as a ministry, we would already be legally approved to operate with a cap up to 100. But we opted instead to go to obtain our own nonprofit status as a separate entity, just for a few logistical reasons. So I think having that consistency with the current building inspection cap would, would be helpful as well. The third reason is when you look at the, the addition from 50 to, to 100, I, I don't really think there would be that much of a difference. You asked about the, how to avoid maybe a, a blockage in the parking lot with the parents coming to pick up at McSwain Elementary. We can make accommodations like at the backside of the church, for example, there's plenty of parking there. When you look at it from a traffic analysis standpoint, we're an acting academy and we're part of a larger network of acting academies. So I was asking other actants about their traffic analysis. And while for, in, for average in the United States, the average family size is two kids. But it turns out that the families who are attracted to the acting academy model normally have a larger family size. So this one, one school that I was in contact with that seemed very similar to ours, there was located in a more rural area. Well, a city about the same size as Stanton, actually. They were sharing with us that their average, the average number of students per family was 4.8. So much higher than, than average. She's, well, I brought one of my kids, but we've got a, I've got four kids total. So if you use the number instead of 4.8 or four, conservatively, just estimate three kids per family. If you increase it by another 50, you'd be looking at 16 or 17 more cars added to, to the traffic. When you look at it as well in terms of total student population from McSwain and Stanton High, an additional 50 students is just 4% of the current student population. So I'm asking, you know, with an extra 16 cars and 4%, that's really what makes the difference to bring your school, to make it financially viable. And then the fourth and last reason that I'm asking for a higher cap is that the space itself works very well for up to 100 persons. The, the amount of space that we're proposing to use within Memorial Baptist, if even if we assume the maximum students, like 93 students of, of that hundred, that comes out to 34 square feet per student, which is much higher than Virginia recommended a space guidelines for the public school. If you average out their space guidelines for K through 12, that comes to 26.8. So 34 square feet per student is much higher. And as Mr. Hartless already mentioned, the parking, there's plenty of parking spaces to accommodate way more than, than would be needed. So to just summarize, I'm asking for a cap of 100 for the financial viability of the school for consistency with current building, building inspection cap for really limited traffic footprint and as well as the space accommodates 100 well within the church. So thank you so much for your consideration. I appreciate your time.
Does anyone have any questions for the applicant?
Yes, I wanted to ask, you mentioned the building inspection would permit up to 100. Is that Sunday school students or school students like yours?
It would be up to 100 for purposes associated with the church ministry. So it doesn't specify which days of the week.
I see. But what I was thinking of is that our concerns were based on not knowing, what we're supposed to be looking at as a planning commission is the impact of this school or potential impact of this school on the neighborhood around it. And right now we're looking at a church building that has a Sunday school and most of the children are going to be in the building and occasionally outside. I'm assuming this weekend there may be an Easter egg hunt or something, but they're going to be mostly inside and they're only there for a portion of the day, a fairly small portion, probably smaller than what your children would be. And I'm just concerned looking at, I think the parking issue is not, you've pointed out that, and I appreciate the research. It's not really the problem, but we are concerned about the amount of noise in the neighborhood that if kids outside playing, we just want to find out that it's going to fit. And that's why we were thinking about 50. So follow-up question is if, how long do you think it would take you to get to the 100 students? How many years or whatevers? What, what are your plans on that?
That's a great question. At this point, since we haven't even launched yet, that's hard for me to estimate.
Sure.
But if we estimate growth sequentially, as each year we grow more and more, given spread of word of mouth, maybe six, seven years, but that's, that's a very, very rough estimate.
I understand. So what could very easily happen from this commission's standpoint is for you to have, to start off with up to 50 and then when you get close to 50, come back in. And if everything seems to be working out, we would be happy to, most likely, I can't speak for sure, but that would be the time when we would be much more comfortable with considering 100 students and just changing your, changing that condition. So.
Well, I appreciate, definitely appreciate you being willing to approve at least up to 50. One reason that I'd like, if possible, that consideration now is if we already invest and start growing the school with that location and that, that's a, there's some risk of maybe it will not be approved for, for whatever reason to be increased or at that point to try to move to another location or to go through, through the, the process again. There's just, there's some extra uncertainty with that. That makes it harder for the planning purposes, given that we would not really be financially viable to be able to, to move elsewhere at only what's equivalent to, to two classrooms.
I see. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Hanson?
I guess. Let me start with a question. I know how to phrase, and that is outdoor space. Right now, there's not a lot of outdoor green space at Memorial Baptist. None of which is fenced in. So what's the outdoor, outdoor time looking like, you know, from your perspective with a small group of students and then of course with 50 or 100, you know, whatever we're looking at there, like how, how's that impacting the, the outdoor space?
Yeah, great question. So pardon me for not knowing the cardinal directions here, but if you're facing the church and you're looking at the front of the church, we would be looking probably to use the outdoor space toward the front right side of the church. So that's between the church and I believe it's McSwain Elementary. And there's plenty of space there for the kids to, to run around, do, do kickball or other sorts of team building exercises there. So I don't foresee that, that being an issue. That's also far away from any, any residences that I don't see that causing any undue noise in the neighborhood. It would be behind where McSwain Elementary would have its recess on the Memorial Baptist side of the property.
So the, I, I guess my question really revolves around, you know, with 100 students, how do you kind of keep them in that area versus, well, and I'm, I don't, it's going to sound terrible to say fence them in. But in some ways, you know, you've got to have a, a, a boundary and we're talking about, I mean, that's a lot of kids to, that's a lot of small elementary level kids to keep in one space.
That's a great question. If we do grow to 100, I do not see that being all elementary. We would look that as our students age out too, that we'd be having a middle school and a high school as well. So by looking up to say 93 would be the max, the number of students, because some of that 100 would be staff. That would be spread out from K to 12 would, would be my anticipation. But I, I also see like, it's, it's very possible we wouldn't necessarily have them all out at the same time. Or if we do, I, I, I don't believe the McSwain Elementary is fenced in during their recess time either, but they're able to make it work.
Okay.
So I, I don't foresee that being a problem.
Go ahead.
So just to clarify, the, what Mr. Hartless said is correct. You anticipate the drop-off and entrance to the building on the side of the church furthest away from Colter Street, correct? If that's, I guess it would be the east side, but.
Yes, that, that was, that was my thought. Yes, I think that would probably be the smoothest and, and avoid, avoid any traffic blockage.
And there's a separate entrance. Do you have any objection if there was actually a condition that required, you know, using that entrance for drop-off and pickup?
I don't think that would be an issue. To clarify, would that be the entrance to the gym area of the church or?
I, I guess that would be the way, way I would describe. There's like sort of two entrances. One is, you know, the furthest one, I guess, to say from Colter Street.
Yes, that would be fine. Yeah, thank you.
And then do you have an idea of hours? And forgive me if I know that and have forgotten.
No, we were thinking from eight o'clock to 3:15.
Okay.
Is that, that's hours of operation where the children would be present? But would you all, staff members be there earlier or later?
Yes, the staff members would get, the few staff members that we would have would get there slightly before eight and would probably stay a little after 3:15 as well. But we're thinking of drop-off between like eight and, eight, and 8:30 as close to eight as possible. And then pick up promptly at 3:15.
So you would not be having any after-school programs or after-school care?
That's not the plan. Correct.
Um, I, I think I found a way to formulate what I was going to ask earlier. So you've mentioned, and, and I'm going to muck this up and I hope that, that Tim can help me out here. That the currently, the church it can have a program that's similar to yours, but it's more associated with the church than its separate thing, that they could have it up to 100 students now?
Up to 100 persons associated with the school now. Yes.
Um, and that number's based on what? Like where did we, like, how does that number come about to start with?
That's, correct me if I, if I'm wrong, but I believe that's a building code under, under educational occupancy where there's a carve-out exception for religious institutions.
Because I, let me, let me, let me say where I'm going here and then maybe we can kind of get a clarification. Is if the current building is okay for up to 100 peoples associated with the school situation, as long as it's a joint with the church and that sort of thing. But now, and that's for the whole building and I'm even going to subtract out the sanctuaries because I'm sure those aren't part of the school program. I'd be looking at a building footprint conservatively four times bigger than what we're talking about here for the same amount of students. And that, I guess, is where I'm having a little bit of a disconnect is that if the whole building, again, less the sanctuaries, is acceptable for 100, why would 25% of that space be acceptable for 100? And that's what I, and that might even be a technical question that I'm, that I'm posing.
I think that's more a question for staff than you.
Yeah, I'm not sure who the best person to ask that is.
The building code in that section does not, does not stipulate square footage. That I think square footage per student is, is a, is a separate issue. It's just that, and Mr. Hartless, please. But my understanding is that any church is able, under the church's special use permit, to conduct a ministry of a school, up to 100 persons associated with that school pending the, the building inspection.
So I, I'm not familiar with the specific numbers, but churches do get a lot of leeway within the building code. Wherever they get exemptions to things that, that other non-religious operators would not get. So as a Sunday school use, not sure what the number would be. It sounds like David might have, our building plan reviewer might have given the number 100 in terms of how many kids could be in the Sunday school area at one time based on an occupancy limit.
And that's, I guess, where I'm struggling with because the occupancy limits are typically determined by square footage.
Yes, so this would be.
I mean, that's.
Yes.
Yeah.
So the, I keep, this is separate than the occupancy. This is the building code for, for educational. So for educational purposes allows religious institutions of any size, as long as they pass a building inspection, to be able to operate a school of up to 100 persons without any additional special use permit. So that's what would be, I think, the entire Memorial Baptist, I believe, is over 43,000 square feet. But even with that, whether it's that or just 3,000 square feet, they would still have a similar restriction of up to 100 without additional approvals. Thank you.
So if we're giving, if we were to grant your request or recommend that you have your request approved for a school that could go up to 100 student or 100 people, mostly students with staff. And you have a 30, 3,250, that's 32 and a half square feet per person, or have I got my math right?
You're looking the wrong direction.
No, that's, that's correct.
I, I find that it's, it's. I, I find that it's, it's, I find that it's really difficult to imagine people doing that kind of, I, I don't, it doesn't feel like it's enough to me. And that's part of the reason that I'm hoping that we could, that I was, I thought the fifty cap sounded better, but.
Well, I'm glad you brought that up, because I was, I was curious as well, and that's why I went to, uh, Virginia.gov, uh, website to, to get the, um, the public school space guidelines. And you, when you average out their space guidelines for general classrooms between K through twelve, the average came to twenty-six point eight square foot, um, square feet per student. And in this case, with ninety-three students, that would be almost exactly thirty-four square feet per student. So we are going to be exceeding the state recommended guidelines for public schools.
I see what you mean. Thank you.
Thank you.
So it is the thirty-two and a half was what I came up, but I'm probably counting all hundred and not just the students, um, is higher than that.
Yes. Yes, ma'am.
Any other questions? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else here to speak to this matter? Okay, anyone on Zoom?
No, we have no hands raised.
Well, with that, I will close the public hearing. Any questions for staff or discussion? And I know you don't know, but I'm just sort of skeptical that it's just a blanket one hundred, because you could have a two thousand square foot building or a hundred thousand square foot building.
Yeah, I'm not, I'd like to know where that hundred number came from, from the person who gave it to them. I'm, and I have a and is that going to apply to a school where the students are there all day, or is it, um, going to apply? Did they intend it for a Sunday school where they might be there for a couple of three hours on Sunday morning, or maybe they have a, a program vacation Bible school, which might be the same thing. I'm just, I'm, I'm not comfortable with this. Interested in other people's opinions here.
I guess coming into it, just looking at the application, fifty seemed high to me. Hearing your, your plan and your arguments, I, I feel more comfortable with the fifty between staff and student that, the staff settled on in their recommendation, but the hundred seems like a lot, just knowing the traffic that's in the area and that it is on the very residential side of everything.
And I, while it is risky, of course, to say, to come, expect someone to come back in two, three or four years and apply for a larger condition, a larger number of students under the condition. I think that protects the city, and I don't think the risk is that great if everything's going well. What about you?
I tend to agree with your assessment.
And just having had, um, two nephews that attended McSwain and occasionally getting roped into drop off, I, I think, I think adding a condition that, um, specified that entrance to use might be appropriate as well. In addition.
So, um, how can we word the students and drop offs, um, parents or?
I guess the entrance would, would be. Is that not right?
I would, I, I thought you were talking about this side over here.
I am, is that on east?
I maybe call that an entrance on the southeast side, like. Because this is northeast. And I would say an entrance along this wall, because I have three or four of them, and I don't know that we, I don't know the matter of which one, just you're talking about this side.
Yeah, I was trying to look, yeah.
I thought they were.
Uh, there's at least one here. There's at least three entrances along that.
Oh, no, I'm talking about off of Taylor.
You say you are talking about the northeast side.
This, this entrance as opposed to this one, or there are two entrances here.
I don't care which entrance they go into the building. I just meant from Taylor into the parking lot.
So that would be the southernmost entrance off of Taylor?
So the condition.
Yeah, I would say southeastern, I think that's.
So we're looking at a condition that says student drops off, drop offs must be done using the southernmost entrance off of Taylor Street. Drop off and pickup.
Cause it seems to coincide pretty well on both, which makes sense. It's school hours.
Because the, the McSwain ones will be using, or you could say the entrance furthest from Colter Street would be less vague potentially.
Using the entrance furthest, the entrance off of Taylor, entrance from Taylor Street that's furthest from Colter Street?
Yes.
Yes, using the entrance off of Taylor Street. That is furthest. Furthest from North Colter Street. Student drop offs and pickups must be done using the entrance off Taylor Street that is furthest from North Colter Street.
That makes sense to me. Thank you.
Can I try this?
I will entertain a motion if everyone is ready.
Madam Chair, on the basis that it would serve the interests of public necessity, convenience, general welfare and good zoning practice, I move that Planning Commission recommend approval of the special use permit at two twenty-four Taylor Street with the following two conditions. One, if the school use expands to exceed fifty students and staff, a new special use permit will be required. Two, student drop offs and pickups must be done using the entrance off of Taylor Street that is furthest from North Colter Street.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded. The Planning Commission recommend approval of the requested special use permit at two twenty-four Taylor Street with the two stated conditions. Would the clerk please call the roll?
Ms. Wiegand?
Aye.
Mr. Hanson?
Aye.
Ms. Robinson?
Aye.
Motion carries.
The special use permit has been recommended for approval with the stated condition, and the matter will be heard by City Council at its.
I should have had that ready. It will be on council's May the fifteenth meeting.
Which will start at?
Seven PM in this room.
Thank you very much.
So that's.
Thank you.
Twenty-second.
Yeah, the fifteenth will be the third Thursday.
Yeah, it's a.
So it's which the?
May, May eighth, seven PM.
May eighth, so earlier.
Yes, it is May eighth at seven PM. The fifteenth is the Planning Commission meeting. May the eighth at seven PM.
Thank you, Mr. Guesper.
Maybe I should start asking you that question. All right, we now turn to old business, starting with item four A, consideration of amendments to chapter eighteen point eight five H one Historic Preservation District of Title eighteen zoning of the Stanton City Code. Ms. Nesselrod, zoning administrator for the city, will present the staff report.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Planning Commission conducted a public hearing at its February twentieth, twenty twenty-five meeting to review the proposed changes to the H one Historic Preservation District ordinance. At that meeting, the commission had questions regarding the proposed addition to the ordinance regarding the eighteen point eight five point zero five zero seven M exception to the guidelines. Staff took the proposed amendment back to the Historic Preservation Commission, as well as to the city attorney to review uh, and the proposed changes. The HPC reviewed the language in regards to when there is a conflict in the local zoning ordinance and the historic district design guidelines and felt that it was correct, although they did propose to change the word from in to between, so between the two. Uh, additionally, after review of the ordinance by the city attorney, it was recommended to add a, a definition of substantial justification, and then to add as in noted by the member making the motion to the end of that exception. Uh, I did highlight those changes in the attachment one. Also during the review, the HPC made two other changes to the proposed ordinance uh, on line eighty-four to strike the word reconstruction. When we changed the definition of reconstruction, it no longer applied in the instance in that line item. It meant something completely different. So they wanted to strike that out of there after reviewing it, and then in line five forty-one and five forty-two, they did add an additional item for administrative review, uh, due to a change in regards to, um, we're having to review a, um, the roof resurfaced with in-con materials. So we didn't want to make a property owner have to wait a month to review an in-con material, because it was more than fifty percent of the whole roof element. That was one of the changes in the ordinance. So we did add that. Staff recommends that Planning Commission recommend approval of the proposed changes to SCC eighteen point eight five H one Historic Preservation District.
Seeing as there's already been a public hearing conducted on the matter, do the commissioners have any questions for Ms. Nesselrod, or is there any discussion?
Uh, I'm gonna ask one question if I could.
Please.
Number twenty-three, which is either slides one thirty-nine and one forty, uh, substantial justification means a conflict between the Stanton Historic District Design Guidelines and the Stanton Zoning Ordinance that is not inconsequential, incidental, or trivial. Who decides whether it's inconsequential, incidental, or trivial?
That's up to the commission.
It's up to us.
The Historic Preservation Commission.
Do we need to better clarify that? Like, should we add that, that that's who's doing that, or is that somewhere that I'm not seeing?
It's in the actual, um, title of the chapter under the historic. And since it's referenced in the.
Okay.
I feel like since it's referenced in the item, that there, the commission is the one that's making a decision by the motion of the member.
Okay.
That it would be covered under them.
And also if it was appealed, then that same standard would be used for, you know, even if.
City Council.
Okay, it, it's not just somebody going, this is what I think. There's, there's means and methods in place to define that. Perfect. Okay.
I will entertain a motion.
Yes, ma'am. Madam Chair, I have a motion.
Please.
On the basis that the amendments will serve the interest of public necessity, convenience, general welfare and good zoning practice, I move that Planning Commission recommend approval of the amendments to SCC eighteen point eight five H one Historic Preservation District as presented.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded. The Planning Commission recommend approval of the requested zoning tax amendment to chapter eighteen point eight five H one Historic Preservation District of Title eighteen zoning of the Stanton City Code. Would the clerk please call the roll?
Mr. Hanson?
Aye.
Ms. Wiegand?
Aye.
Ms. Robinson?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Item four B, consideration of a mass rezoning of existing non-conforming residential uses in areas zoned business and industrial in the historic districts and the south side. Mr. Heartless, Planning Commissioner, I'm sorry, Planning Manager, and Maggie Roche, Long Range Planner for the city, will give the staff report.
Uh, so, uh, thank you all. Um, just a quick reminder that this project is looking at properties that are currently zoned commercial, but are actually being used for residential purposes. Thank you. And rezoning them back to residential. Um, so I'd like to thank Planning Commission for going on the field trips over the, uh, past few weeks. There were a few properties identified that required additional research, and that information has been provided to you all in a table. Is there any questions about that at this time?
I believe we asked a number of questions on the field trip, and I'm wondering when we're gonna get it. This is the time that we'll hear those. Okay, thank you.
Yes, that was in that table that was sent out yesterday, so it wasn't in the original packet.
Okay, but yeah, got it.
So we tried to go through the questions that you had raised during the field trip for each property and Ms. Roche did, did this table for you. She noted your concern in the center column, and then the column to the far right is the city's, you know, response based on the research that we did.
And I have to confess, I had a super couple of busy days at work, and I didn't see that email, so I haven't seen this. It's clear.
Yeah, and I'm same problem.
Would it be too much trouble that we maybe could run through them to, because I know we want to try to move this along? And so maybe if we sort of take the extra couple of minutes now, in the long run, that will keep things moving.
Yeah, no, there weren't that many on the list. Um, we can start at the top. The first one we had questions about was ten fifty-six West Beverly. It's currently zoned B one. We're looking to rezone it to R two. There was question from the commission if there was a business potentially in that location, and we checked with the assessor, and, um, it is not. It is residential. They did have a business license, um, over ten years ago for a hotel, but that is not current anymore, so.
That seems appropriate then.
Um, see next on the list, we have twenty-six East Gay Street. That is currently R three C, and we're looking, um, to rezone it to R two. There is a question as far as what the conditions on that property were. We actually discovered there is an error in GIS, and that property is currently zoned B two, so it would just be a rezoning from B two to R two.
So the chart is wrong, so it's not RC three, it's B two.
Yes.
Okay.
Got it.
And then thirty-one East Gay Street, um, would be from B two to R two. There was concern if the rezoning would make it non-conforming. And, uh, we checked with the assessor's office, and there are two residential units in there. Uh, there's also two residential refuse charges. So staff recommends to not include.
Because that would make it non-conforming. Okay, thank you.
Would it, would it still make sense to put it to another residential instead of the B two?
So the lot was a little over eight thousand square feet. It wasn't large enough density wise to have two units. So if we did rezone it, it, it's, it would be, still be non-conforming, um, and the, the most it could ever have is one, is single family dwelling. As a business zoning, they could apply for a special use permit if, you know, if something rather happened to the building, or there's a fire or flood, they could ask for a special use permit to try and reestablish the two unit use.
Okay.
Uh, three eighteen Sterling, uh, we had that one going from B two to R three C. That one was a little different, because it would be rezoning it to a, um, conditional status, and so we had to check with the city attorney to make sure that that was all good and that we are able to do that. Um, we are, the owner just has to accept those conditions, so I might need to do a little bit of extra outreach on that one to make sure they understand.
Okay.
Um, so we are recommending to include that one.
Would you anticipate doing that before you advertised, or what point?
We would wait to the public meeting to see if the owner came. Uh, if the owner did not come to our public input meeting, then we would make contact with them prior to having any, any advertisements or letters or public hearings.
There was also questions about three oh five to three oh nine Betsy Bell. Originally, we had considered rezoning it from B two to R three C. However, there were some concerns from the commission about wanting to keep it as business, or potentially changing it to professional in the future. So for now, we are recommending not to include it.
Remind me what that was. I'm, I'm, can't find my, I can't catch. Okay, yeah.
They were residences, but we're kind of thinking.
Oh, that was the one where was it three oh five was, the one in the middle was vacant?
Yes.
Okay, gotcha. I'm with you.
Yep. Then two 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 Church Street. We had looked at that possibly going from I two to B two. But really, that doesn't align with the project goal of rezoning properties from commercial to residential. So right now, the recommendation is not to include that one.
That's the big building?
Yeah, that was the big, the big brick warehouse building. It used to be the Huger Davidson Warehouse.
On that.
Okay. Yeah, I'd, I'd love to see something happen to it, but I think this is one of those buildings that's gonna take some, you know, an act of God or lightning bolt or something. I don't mean that, but I mean, it's gonna take some kind of real change in the.
Genius idea, fire lightning bolt, right?
Yes, exactly. I meant that we. Yes, exactly, I meant that we've gotta come up with a new kind of a district that that would fit in without any parking and et cetera.
Yeah, uh, three seventy nine North Colter, we have that going from B one to R three, there was some confusion there, um. There's a G I S error on the neighboring property. Um, so once that sorted out on our end, it, we think it's okay to include. Um, it it was gonna look almost like a spot rezoning, like it wouldn't fit in with the neighboring, but we have figured out that that was just a G I S error.
On the parcel behind, that was the one we saw on Tuesday, right?
Yeah.
And that error has already been corrected. Nice.
Alright, so I believe those were all of the properties that were on the list that um there were questions about. There were also a few properties that we saw while we were out on the field trips um that you all had recommended, maybe we include. So that first one is eleven ten Churchill Avenue, um, it's currently zone B one. Um, we looked into maybe rezoning it for R three, um, that is a commercial property that is currently for sale. It used to be an insurance office, um, however, it does look like a residential house and it's next to a residential house that has been included in this. Um, so we did, um, I spoke to the real estate agent and the owner just to see if they would be interested. In converting it back to residential and they are not at this time.
Thank you for doing that.
Yes.
And then ten Quarry Street, we looked at as a possible addition going from B one to R three. That is a vacant lot behind six oh two through six oh eight Winthrop, uh, six oh two through six oh eight Winthrop have been included in the rezoning. Um, but this is a vacant parking lot just behind those properties and uh rezoning would make that use nonconforming. So we have also recommended not to include. That one. Are there any questions? The next table, um, so the last table is residential. Properties that are zone commercial that are in the rezoning areas we looked at that we excluded and the reasons why. They were excluded and not included on that original list. Um, so the first one is three oh eight North New, um, it's zone B two. Uh, we recommend not including in the in the rezoning because that would make the use nonconforming. And that is the same case for four twenty two North New Street. Uh, five twelve North New Street, similar, um, it's currently zone B two, we don't recommend including it because it is church owned.
Before you move on from North New. The Little House.
Yes.
Is that is that on here?
Yes, I believe that, I think that might be five twelve North New.
Okay.
Of course, I don't have the map in front of me, so. Maybe don't take my word for it, but I'm pretty sure.
I I.
It's a small house.
Yeah.
Ninety nine percent sure that's the one.
Yeah, I'm pretty sure it is. Um. Eleven Prospect Street, zone B two, a rezoning would make the current use nonconforming, so again, we're recommending not to include. Six oh three North Augusta, zone B two, also church owned, so we are recommending not to include it. And then finally, uh, six twenty one North Augusta, it is zone B two, it does have an S U P. Um. There are currently three residential units in there according to the assessors office and so rezoning that would make it nonconforming.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Any questions?
I think that's all clear and we appreciate all the extra research to go out and get the answers for this.
Yes, you did, you did a fabulous job taking this on, not having been through it before and we are very appreciative, yes.
Um, just one last thing.
Oh, sorry.
Um, we're looking at dates for the public meeting, right now we're looking at the week of June ninth through thirteenth. Does that generally work for the commission? Um, it would not be the twelfth because that's uh council day.
Oh, wouldn't you know, this would be the night I didn't bring my calendar. I know, I should have done that.
When you say that's, oh, just it'd be one of those nights that week, I got you.
Generally, I think Wednesdays.
Except for you, you too.
What?
Except for you, you have to come every night, um.
That would be the eleventh, basically.
I'm I'm good.
I'm good with that week, um, it's actually better than some others, um, yeah.
Generally, for these kind of meetings in the past, we've done either a Monday or a Wednesday, I I think Wednesdays are better because they're in the middle of the week.
Especially in the summer.
Yeah.
For for what, that's good for that week, for what it's worth, the week before that would be.
Good to know.
Move in that direction.
Okay, so we'll get uh June eleventh, that's the Wednesday that week.
And does that work to do it, have you talked to the high school yet to see?
No, we have not talked to the high school yet.
But we wanna pick a second date just in case, I I I think that location works so well if. Do you wanna backup date just in case that doesn't?
That might be helpful.
Yeah.
The Monday, the ninth?
Yeah.
Yeah. Or or Tuesday, the tenth, so.
Okay, so ninth through eleventh, well.
I think that's after her school's done, so it should.
Uh, yeah, I I.
In terms of times, um. We've tried to do them in the past at a time where people could maybe stop on their way home from work. Um, so I think we've started around five o'clock before, around like five to six thirty.
I think what we did for the citizens advisory worked. Really.
Was that five to seven, was it?
Yeah.
I think five to seven.
Five thirty to seven.
Especially if you've got a fairly large number of people in this group compared to a couple of the other ones of these we've done, so I think the two hours would be.
Okay, five to seven, okay.
Just in case everybody shows up with questions instead of only forty of them.
And what time would you want us there, just so I can mark off my calendar?
Well, before five, I think staff can take care of the setup, so just need you there.
We'll get there early enough to get the maps and the list hung on the wall and, you know, create a couple of workspaces. Um, get a sign up sheet out. Maybe set up a table, it it it, we we can handle that. Um, and like I said before, I think we're we're looking at maybe two sets of maps and two lists. Uh, both would be exactly the same, but put them in two different places so that we could have two different. Areas going at the same time, just because. There's almost a hundred properties here and there's a potential for so many people to be there.
At one point, we mentioned maybe having. The ability to get on the G I S to kinda look up some things if we needed to, so I I think there's a screen there, might just need to. There's probably a projector to go with that screen, so it might just need to be a laptop with the.
I think that's right, yeah, we used it for the open house, that was the case.
Yeah. Might just be ready as a backup situation.
Everybody good with that?
Perfect.
All right.
We will check on those dates and get back to you via email, um, to let you know which date or we're gonna, we're gonna go with.
Okay, perfect. All right, next item on our agenda is item four C, consideration of um. An amendment to chapter eighteen point five oh. P one professional district of title eighteen zoning of the Stanton City Code. To allow florist shops and similar uses as a permitted. As a use permitted upon review, Tim Hartless will present the staff report.
Thank you, Madam Chair, um. This is a continuation of of the item that you all considered last month. Um, where we were looking at florist shops. On potentially other similar uses. Um, being added to um uses permitted on review in the P one districts. After some discussion last month, uh, you all were not comfortable with the language that. That we had inserted, so you you recommended that this go to council. Um, with just florist shops as a use permitted on review and that's that's how it will go to council next week. But we have been working on. Language that. Might meet our needs that. Is a little more clear as to exactly what it is we're looking at. Um, that could potentially be. Compatible as a use permitted on review in a professional district. Um, so the the language we've brought to you tonight for your consideration, um, it. Would be a a number two, so number one would say florist shop and then number two would say. Retail businesses primarily focused on order fulfillment. And delivery of specialized goods and services where a majority of annual revenue is generated through remote sales. This category um shall include. Businesses that utilize online platforms, phone orders. And similar methods of customer interaction or customer transactions. With limited in person retail activity. So we're trying to kinda define what this is. Because I know if we tried to make a list of businesses, we're gonna miss things that. Could have been included that that we just didn't think about, um, so we thought we'd. Try the route of of defining what this is and and why it could be compatible and then. The zoning administrator could look at each of these on a case by case basis to see if it fits into this definition.
But you, so uses permitted on a review though is just. I'm sorry, I shouldn't be asking questions, you haven't asked.
I I think we can, I, he's done with it.
Sorry.
Yeah.
So.
There's no pub, well, I guess before you ask your question, can I ask a procedural question? So are we continuing off the prior public hearing that we're not having a public hearing?
We would like. To to consider this as a continuation of last month's discussion. Um, and I think I should probably run this by the city attorney to see if he believes we need to do a public hearing. Um, but tonight, I'm I'm mainly. My goal is to see if this is acceptable to you and if you would like to move forward with with this language.
I yeah, I wasn't sure where you were going with your move, like I didn't know if you were gonna jump that into next month, I mean, next week.
We're not gonna stick it into next week, this would be handled as a as a separate briefing to city council. We we didn't want to slow the process down from Ms. Swan because she was in a hurry because she purchased the property and needs to, needs to get moving. Um, but while we're discussing this, I think we should, we should go ahead and try to finish it.
While it's fresh.
Yeah, while it's fresh.
Sorry to interrupt.
No, I'm sorry to interrupt to start with. Um. I then I think actually by reading it, I think I answered, I answered my question, but this is reviewed, this, this is the same process that we just went through with Ms. Swan is that they'd come before us. City council a little bit, um, be, and I I asked that because I think the other half of what we were talking about. Was making certain that the use was compatible with. The the place also, like the florist shop in the bit, what felt like the business office already with the parking lot made sense. Some of those downtowns don't make sense, but at the same time, like. If I go out on a limb. This definition. Is an Amazon center, so, which we don't want in a P one zoning, so we still have the power to go, no, this isn't what we're looking for.
All of these would be.
Yeah.
A special use permit. Specific to the use, specific to the property location. And we would get an opportunity to review each one.
This would alleviate the, this would alleviate the first half of what we discussed last week, but not, or last month, but not the second half, basically. You should, you wouldn't have to go back through the zoning of the text amendment change, but just the special use permit.
Right.
Yeah, right, okay.
And. How do we feel about? Phone orders and an adding slash or similar methods? Cause they might not have all of the. I mean, the way that that.
And or similar methods, yeah.
I'm fine with that. It's a good idea, it might be one of them rather than all of them.
Yes.
Some combination thereof.
I like the specialized goods element of it.
Yeah, this really does a a nice job of addressing what we were talking about with that. Last last month.
Yeah.
I can support it.
You don't see any. I'm just, just one more nitpicky thing, um, you don't see a problem if if a majority of annual reviews generated through remote sales. If somebody came in and claimed something, I mean, is that gonna be a problem or? Are there other things that are phrased that way? I'm just, I just don't wanna have to step to bind themselves in the position where they gotta sit down and go through. Logbooks or or records of some kind and to determine whether, how much of it was remote sales.
I mean, I guess at the outset, I mean, when they're. Making the application for the special use permit, they're gonna have to provide some sort of. Stantiation of that.
They're gonna have to provide some kind of model that shows that that is how their business is oriented, I think for a business just starting out. It's not gonna be possible for them to provide that information, but then if we did ever get a complaint. Then the investigation of the complaint, we could look at at that to see if they're meeting that requirement. But at the beginning, when they're making application and when they're just starting the business. It's gonna, it's gonna be a little bit of speculation as to.
Well, I think it's gonna have, I think Ms. Swan kinda did a good job of that when she did her, like, just sort of the industry in general, she brought some statistics to us, um, beyond her own. Sales. So I I don't think that's impossible. So looking at the suggested motion. So I guess i- if that motion were made, you would first check with the city attorney before you actually put it on. City council's agenda as to whether we need another public.
Yeah, as to whether you all need to conduct a new public hearing or whether council needs to conduct a second public hearing, I I'll figure out the logistics of that. Um.
Okay.
Okay.
And and we'll try to move it forward.
You need us to sort of indicate that we authorize you to do that or is that part of the? Oh, okay, oh, okay, I'm sorry. Since you can read.
Madam Chair, could I like to make a motion?
Please.
On the basis that the amendment as amended would serve the interest of public necessity, convenience, general welfare and good zoning practice. I move the planning commission recommend approval of an amendment to S C C eighteen point five zero P one professional district.
Second.
It is removed and seconded, the planning commission recommend. Approval of the requested zoning text amendment to chapter eighteen point five P one professional district of title eighteen zoning of the Stanton City Code. Would the clerk please call the roll?
Ms. Wiegand.
Aye.
Mr. Hanson.
Aye.
Ms. Robinson.
Aye.
Motion carries.
I don't see any other business, is that still correct?
Uh, no ma'am, no other business.
Then would you kindly update us on any actions of city council since our last meeting?
Uh, we have not had any items go before council since your last meeting. Uh, ne- next week's council meeting, we will present. Uh, on the zoning text amendment and the special use permit for Melissa Swan's florist shop.
The next um item on our agenda is item seven, matters from the public, if there are any matters. Um, other than those that have been discussed this evening that anyone here or on Zoom would like to discuss. Now is the time to do that, we just asked that you'd come to the front to the podium, um, and state your name and address. Is there anyone on Zoom?
Yes, but we have no hands raised.
Okay. In that case, I will say that the next planning commission meeting will be held on May fifteen twenty twenty five and I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.